Good evening, everyone. We are Grace with the Band of Brothers 12034. We're going to get this meeting started and we're going to have the Band of Brothers present the colors and do the Pledge of Allegiance. I call this meeting to order at 8:30. Would you all please rise?
Under guard, hut is hut. March time, march. Detail, hut. Left face. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please face the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the free which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every duty and justice for all. Order, march. About face. Prepare to post colors. Ball back there, gentlemen. Right face. March time, march. Detail, hut. Right face. This is it, gentlemen, thank you.
You could call up Mr. Daniel Lopez, Commander of Band of Brothers 12034. Mr. Lopez, may they be seated?
I want to thank Councilmember Robin Carter for bringing this request to the council members and allowing the POW and MIA chair to have a permanent place in the city council chambers. This gives all those who walk through these doors a reminder of the 81,000 men and women that are missing in action. Too often we go through our busy days and forget about all those who have not come home to their loved ones. So on behalf of VFW Post 12034, Band of Brothers, we are honored for this opportunity. Thank you.
I have a message here I'd like to read first, and it says, "We are honored to be able to present the first part of the Prisoner of War in Missing in Action POW/MIA memorial that will be displayed in our council chambers around July 4th of this year. We wanted to share with you that are here the first part of the memorial prior to our nation's Memorial Day observation. As this is only a part of the memorial, we are only allowed to display it for our audience, and as it is not complete, we are not allowing any photographs or pictures out of respect for the dignity of the family that has endured the challenges of having a family member or friend in the MIA or POW category. This is so difficult for them. This follows the same respect given for the POW/MIA table ceremony that is at a Memorial Day ceremony, the same reverence as this time. Our goal is to highlight the over 80,000 POW/MIA individuals. You are not forgotten. I want to thank all of you joining us tonight, and also the VFW Post 12034 Band of Brothers for your service. Okay, Dan Harden, would you come up and join us? And Daniel Lopez? At this time, we have a commendation for you, and I'd like to read it at this time. It says, "Whereas more than 82,000 servicemembers who have not returned home has been listed as prisoner of war or missing in action and have too long been forgotten by all their families and friends. And whereas it is important to instill in the community the significance of the contributions that members of the United States Armed Forces have made in securing and protecting the freedoms that residents enjoy today. And whereas in 2012, the effort began to place chairs of honor across the United States in sports arenas and stadiums, town halls, and state capitals in remembrance of prisoner of war and missing in action servicemembers to represent those servicemembers who are unable to build the seats due to their sacrifices for our country. And whereas veterans of foreign war post 12034 would like to present a chair of honor to the City of Laverne to hold a place of honor in the city council chambers. And whereas honoring and celebrating the men and women that have served our country in the six branches of the United States Armed Forces has always been paramount to the City of Laverne and our residents. And whereas to further impart the importance of this gift to serve as a constant reminder of the important role the United States Armed Forces and those that serve have played in the history and development of our country and state as it is being presented during Military Appreciation Month. And now therefore that this commemorative that on commemorate that on the 16th day of May 2022, the City of Laverne proudly accepts the acknowledgement and remembrance of all those who have and continue to serve the community and their country. That the Chair of Honor be a constant reminder of all the sacrifices made for our country by those still missing American servicemembers. This is dated the 16th of May 2022."
Thank you. I'd like to say a few words, sir. Do you have your mic?
We thought you were going to get away with just a few words.
There is no time limitation for you, sir. You take your time.
Words cannot express the amount of gratitude we owe the men and women of Armed Forces. The City of Laverne has a deep connection with the United States military veterans. It is a relationship the city council today and councils of the past have taken very seriously. Some examples: the Military Veterans Banner Program; the staunch support you've shown for the VFW Post 12034, the Band of Brothers; the fundraising and building of the Laverne Veterans Memorial; your attendance at the Veterans Memorial ceremonies; and many other times you have honored veterans in this very room. So tonight, we thank you for accepting the post offer to place a chair of honor in the Laverne City Council chambers. Daniel, we're going to uncover the chair here so you can take a good look.
It's kind of hard to see from the console.
Yeah, I will explain a little bit. The chair is made of walnut, a hardwood. It took two very strong police officers to carry that in here for us. In the middle of the chair, you see the plaque, the POW/MIA, "You are not forgotten." The reason we're asking you not to take photographs tonight is because the chair is not complete. The grains you can see are beautiful, but they will be more beautiful after we finish it five more times before that's done. Included with the chair, there's some other accoutrements, and I'm going to explain those to you in just a minute. Here in the council, as we've heard, the Chair of Honor will serve as a permanent memorial to all those who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom and as a way for the Laverne citizens to honor those brave souls every time they come to the city hall. The chair is also a symbol that our nation continues to actively seek, locate, and identify prisoners of war or those who are missing in action, and to let them know that there will always be a place when they return home. There are a few guidelines for the Chair of Honor. The seat must be cordoned off to prevent use, so no one will ever sit in this chair unless it's a POW or an MIA. The Chair of Honor is to remain permanently empty to help people remember that even though the soldiers are not here, there's always a space for them. The Honor Chair should be accompanied by a memorial plaque that's not here today, and it's a stand that holds that plaque, with the message, "You are not forgotten." Our VFW Post will work with city staff to complete the placement of the Honor Chair in this chamber and to meet the standards that our honored soldiers who are prisoners of war and missing in action deserve. So I think not everyone fully understands, we have two on the monument, two names that are MIA. That would be Lieutenant Colonel James Miguelde. He was shot down, he's an Air Force pilot, was shot down over North Vietnam. They have not recovered his remains. They do not know what has happened to him, so he is listed as MIA. The other is Private Alan Thompson. He was MIA during the Cold War. He's also on the memorial. He was, had just finished his training in the Army to be a sonar or radar man. He was flying with several others to Alaska for his posting when his plane went down over the North Pacific. He is listed in action as MIA, and he is listed as lost at sea. So we have two members of this city. Our VFW Post, or excuse me, we have one request of you, and that is the Chair of Honor will leave this space in the council chambers twice a year. On Memorial Day and on Veterans Day, it will hold another place of honor at the Laverne Veterans Memorial during the two important holiday celebrations that we hold there. With that, I would like to ask the post to stand. With that, VFW Post 12034, the Band of Brothers, you have to take this Chair of Honor to be placed in the Laverne City Hall Chamber where all citizens can come to honor and remember soldiers that are prisoner of war or missing in action.
Present, march. Ready, hut.
Thank you very much. We have another couple of proclamations. Whereas the City of Laverne includes a running number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community in building a more perfect union. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcome and supported. And whereas the Senior Advisory Committee recognizes our need to create a community that provides the services and supports older Americans need to thrive and live independently for as long as possible. And whereas the City of Laverne and Senior Advisory Committee can work to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities are responsive to the individual needs and preferences, increasing access to services to support aging in place. And whereas we recognize the importance of empowering older Americans to age their way. Whereas we recognize the importance of empowering older Americans to age their way, now be therefore be resolved that on this 16th day of May 2022, the City of Laverne does hereby proclaim May 2022 as the Older Americans' Month, encouraging all residents of Laverne to recognize the contributions of our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and joint efforts to older American choices about how they age in their communities, dated the 16th day of May 2022. Who's going to be receiving this?
This one.
I'll bring it to you. Well, thank you very much. The next proclamation, this is Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas each year in May, Mental Health Awareness Month is recognized to support efforts at fighting the stigma associated with mental health, providing support, educating the public, and advocating for equal care. And whereas according to the National Institute of Mental Health, studies show there are an estimated 52.9 million adults aged 18 or older in the United States suffering from mental illness, representing over 20% of all U.S. adults. And whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental illness every year, only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment. And people with mental illness often recover if given the necessary services and supports to their communities. And whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help. Research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through greater public awareness about mental illness so that there is a change in the negative attitudes and behaviors towards people with mental illness. And whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses. And whereas Tri-City Mental Health delivers mental health services for the City of Laverne and has been the designated mental health authority for residents serving children, youth, adults, and older adults alike. Tri-City remains a steadfast community partner, supporting and sustaining an integrated system of care for individuals experiencing mental health conditions and their families. And now therefore be resolved that on the 16th day of May 2022, the City of Laverne does hereby proclaim May 22 as Mental Health Month. We call upon Laverne citizens, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit the community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness, dated this 16th day, May 2022. Would you like to come on?
Good evening, and happy Mental Health Awareness Month. I wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Carter for being on our board, and thank you for your leadership in this process. Everything I had rehearsed in my hand, you just read it all. So how much I could say. But I want to thank the City of Laverne for helping us fight stigma for mental health. One in four individuals will experience symptoms of a mental illness in a given year. So thank you so much for bringing your awareness to your community, and thank you for helping us fight the stigma, because of stigma, people don't get the help they need, and we really need to have people come and get the help that they need. So thank you so much. It's an honor for Tri-City to receive this.
Well, thank you, and it's a great partnership you've had for many, many years, and without it, we would be a very troubled city, so thank you for all your support. Roll call, Mr. Rossy.
Yes, Councilmember Law.
President.
Councilmember Carson.
Mayor.
Councilmember Carter.
President.
Mayor Potem Davis.
President.
Mayor Heflin.
I think, yeah, I think we could probably take a couple-minute recess if some of the people would like to leave, although the Band of Brothers, I'm sure you have other things to do, unless you'd like to sit in this exciting meeting regarding water and restrictions and things like that, but you're always welcome, but I think you probably have other things to do, so let's take a five-minute recess and we'll... You know what, we're going to start the meeting back up in a second. We're going to call the meeting back order at 6:56 PM. We have next on the agenda is announcement and upcoming events. Mr. Ray, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, former residents. I just want to talk about a couple of things that are coming up. Starting next month, from June 1st through August 14th, we are going to have our annual summer reading program. This is system-wide, and it's called the Summer Discoverers Program. It's available for adults, teens, kids, babies, and toddlers. There are going to be game cards and game challenges that involve reading books or doing activities. You can do read six books, or a combination of three books, or three activities. This can be done online, or you can also stop by the local library and pick up the game cards and things like that. So again, that's from June 1st through August 14th. And also, as part of some reading program, we're making, providing volunteer activities for local teen students. It supplies for ages 14 through 17. It's a perfect opportunity for school kids to get their community service hours. There will be a volunteer orientation on June 1st on 67. Our teen service, Laverne Economic Council, he will be directing that, talking about assignments and schedules. The only thing that's, the only requirement that we have this year is that the students can provide proof of vaccination. Now, we're not photocopying anything, we're not filing anything, just you provide a card or a note from a doctor showing that that person has a vaccine. That is the only requirement. Also, our President Laverne Library Book Sale is ongoing. We have expanded it into our lobby, added some additional tables, more books. Sales are doing very well, so Bob, I think you need to...
I figured that was going to be the next ask. Come, pick up the money.
We're forcing down money, just about four times a day, so that's a good sign. People are buying, and we got a lot of variety, a lot of DVDs, a lot of books for all ages. We've got CDs, movies, children's books, adult books, fiction, nonfiction, manga adult books, basically anything for everybody. So that's basically, so please come on, Bob, and check us out.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Anybody else in the audience have any announcements or online?
Good evening, Mr. Elected Mayor, Miss Council. My name is Rick Bowen. I'm Chair of the Laverne Coalition of Concerned Citizens. Excuse me. On Thursday, June 2nd, beginning at 6:30 PM, LVIII State will sponsor its last election forum before the June 7th election date. Location will be the Rock of the Foothills, Bush Hall, Quarter of Wheeler, and Baseline. Current elected Mayor Tim Peffer, running for District 4 council seat, and current councilmember Mayor Davis, running for District 1 council seat, have both agreed to attend a Q&amp;A forum in order to answer audience questions from various, from all residents. All LVIII State members are invited, as are Laverne residents. Seating will be limited, so please plan accordingly. This is planned as a very interactive program, so that all voters that want to ask questions will have an opportunity to ask those critical questions that are important to them. So we look forward to a very informative meeting that evening. Thank you in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Anyone else in the audience or others? Mr. Crosby.
Yes, just happy to announce, Benita Girls Softball made it to CIF finals, and the game they will play will be either this Friday night or on Saturday at 9:30 AM at Bill Barber Park in Irvine. They will find out tomorrow, because the actual team they'll be playing against is playing right now. And they wanted to schedule either Friday night or Saturday morning, because the high school has their prom Saturday night. So the last time Benita Girls Softball has been at CIF finals is 43 years ago.
So my graduating year, 1979. Very proud of the fact that the girls in my graduating class won that CIF championship.
And if you want tickets, it said to go to gofan.co. It's $5 for kids, 5-13, and students with IDs, and it's $12 for adults. Then, they will play, they've already, will play in the first round of the state tournament, which will be held Tuesday, May 31st at 4 o'clock, and it'll be determined where they play there. If they win the first round, which I'm always confident, they will go to the regional semis, which will be Thursday, June 2nd, and the championship round is Saturday, June 4th. So go out, root on your Benita Girls softball. Has been real exciting the last couple of years, starting with the junior program and now the high school program. And so, again, Friday night or Saturday morning at Bill Barber Park, and tomorrow morning, the high school announces where it's at. What time?
We're going to be testing all of you in five minutes. I hope you did on all those dates right. Thank you, Mr. Crosby.
I just got a real quick little blurb here, and this is not as mayor, but this is as a resident. Code of Fair Campaign Practices. We've been having some issues. There's been a lot of social media up in District 3, and I think as a community, we can do better. I just want to reiterate what we signed, when we all signed up to be elected office, to run for an office. I shall conduct my campaign openly and publicly discussing the issues as I see them, presenting my record and policies with sincerity and frankness, and criticizing without fear or favor the record and policies of my opponents or political parties that merit this criticism. I shall not use or permit the use of character defamation, whispering campaigns, libel, slander, or scareless attacks on any candidate of his or her personal or family life. I shall not use or permit any appeal to negative prejudice based on candidate's actual or perceived race, religious creed, color, national origin, ancestry, physical disability, mental disability, medical condition, marital status, age, sexual orientation, sex, including gender identity, or any other characteristic set forth in Section 12940 of the Government Code, or associated with another person who has any of the actual or perceived characteristics set forth in Section 12940 of the Government Code. I shall not use or permit any dishonest or unethical practice that tends to corrupt or undermine our American system of free elections, whether it hammers or prevents the full and free expression of the will of the voters, including acts intended to hinder or prevent any eligible person from registering to vote, enrolling to vote, or voting. I shall not borrow selection help or campaign contributions from myself or for any other candidate from my employees. I shall the media and publicly repudiate support deriving from any individual or group that resorts on behalf of my candidacy or in opposition to that of my opponent to the methods and tactics that I condemn. I shall accept responsibility to take firm action against any subordinate who violates any provision of this code or the laws governing elections. I shall defend and uphold the right of every qualified American voter to full and equal participation in the electoral process. I, the undersigned candidate for the election public office and stated California Treasurer and Chairperson of a committee making any independent expenditures hereby voluntarily endorse, subscribe to, and solemnly pledge myself to conduct my campaign in accordance with the above principles and practices.
Let's keep it that way. We're a small town, we're still going to be family and friends after this. Let's stop it. Thank you. We move on to consent calendar. Do we have anything pulled, Mr. Rossy?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Dan, I need your motion.
I move that we approve the consent calendar, which includes city council minutes, registered by demands, and armored vehicle replacement, plus some staff... registered by demands and armored vehicle replacement, plus some staff recommendations.
And I'll second that.
Vote please. Thank you. Mr. Rusty, we're going to move a couple items around. We're going to move item 7 right now to public hearing for the annual public protest hearing, Girl Town Laverne Business Improvement District.
That was the first item we had.
Yes. Then we'll move the water conservation ordinance. The faculty is going to report on this. Mr. Shear.
It's going to be started by Director Shear and then we'll have Craig get up afterwards to do a report, the annual report on it.
Good evening, Mr. Shear.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. This is the annual public protest hearing for the Old Town Laverne Business Improvement District. At your last meeting, you set this public hearing with a resolution. This is why it's a public hearing before it. Staff will, or Board Chair Craig Walters will provide you with an overview of the projects and the events that occurred in the district in the last year. Then I'll come back up and give you some details about the proposed budget for next year and then make a recommendation on reestablishing the district boundaries and the assessment formula for the district. Now, obviously, hold a public hearing for that with the resolution attached. So the district was originally formed in 1986 by the council. And so ever since then, there has been this annual meeting. And so I'd like to invite District Chair Craig Walters up to go over some of those events that have occurred over the last year.
Craig.
Eric, City Council. Thank you to be back here again. I happen to be on the council in 86 when the district was formed. And those of you who were around back then, there's a couple of this, you're here, you know. Old Town Laverne was a lot different back then. And I think we had two restaurants and old bookstore, used bookstore and a hardware store and a collection of other small businesses. I honestly can't remember a time since then that Old Town was more vibrant than it is today. And if you were around on Saturday, this last Saturday during the wine walk, you saw that in action. The last two years have been very difficult for owner operated businesses and everyone, everybody else. And I'm very pleased that the vast majority of businesses in Old Town were able to weather that storm and they're now coming back. There's some unintended consequences that happened as a result of that, namely sidewalk dining. If you've been downtown last, last week, you've seen the new patio in front of Cafe Long. Beautiful. And it was in full action on Saturday night. I see that as a great addition. Everybody really likes the street atmosphere that we have down there now. And so I see a lot of bright future for Old Town. This last year, as we were coming out of the pandemic, we were able to have, we've had two car shows last December and then the one about a month ago, the Cool Cruise. Both huge success. We are now at the end of our contract with our current vendor for car shows and so we'll be looking to either re-up with them or go out to it and see who else might want to take it on. But the participants of that car, those car shows are very enthusiastic about being in Old Town. It's one of their favorite places, the tree lined streets. They like the atmosphere, they like the people that come. So that's a, that's a huge plus. We had other activities, traditional activities like the sidewalk coloring contest, Halloween coloring contest. But the big one and something that's really transformed how Old Town, the business association has been able, in business history have been able to operate, is the initiation of the wine walk eight years ago, actually 10 years ago with two years off. This year, we were sold out once again. We had 1,000 people in Old Town. The biggest challenge we had this year is a number of the businesses and our food suppliers, food partners have difficulties with, with employees. And so we had several people that would have liked to participate, but they just, they're not back up to full staffing. So we were down a few of the stops, but I don't think the attendees really noticed that. Everybody was having a great time. It was a hot evening, but cooled down and everybody, I think, enjoyed, enjoyed the evening wonderfully. So with the wine walk and then three years ago, the beer walk, which we hope to bring back this, this coming fall, it's given us a way to create additional revenues. And to me, that, that's real important because we can't just be dependent on the city always going to the city saying, why don't you do this, why don't you do that? So we've been able to, with these additional revenues, put skin in the game. We put money into the tree lights. We currently are in line to put significant amount of money into the new Monero Square stage and revitalization. So folks in Old Town businesses, I think, realize that it really is a partnership. And along those lines, I'll just say, I say this every time, but the partnership between the district and the staff and the city council, I think, just continues to improve. This last Saturday, the staff was fully engaged. We had police department presence. For the first time, we had fire department presence. Had some E and P's walking around in case anybody was overcoming heat or whatever it might be. Public Works, once again, did a great, great job supplying the staff and the support we needed. But first and foremost, I've got to thank once again Community Development Department led by Eric, but also Natalie Hyatt and Candace Bocock. They really make the thing happen. We don't have any paid staff. We had one individual that is associated with the business that did some of the labor work, but really without the staff, we couldn't do it. So I want to thank you for allowing them to participate and hopefully the future for Old Town will, you know, continue to be very bright. Are there any questions or anything?
Yes, I agree. I worked on your first campaign. You too.
And I won that one, so.
You did. Thank you for your leadership because you have been doing this for quite a while. And, you know, as we use the different businesses downtown, I get my hair cut down there and you, they always talk about how great you are because you're a very well soft spoken person that you work with people, you don't demand. And so thank you for that because our downtown has thrived over the years, you know, and even through COVID. Our staff, I'm so proud of our staff because they worked so hard to make sure that downtown stayed open during COVID. So thank you, I just wanted to say.
Great job.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. And I think the thing that, what I always say is it takes a village to run anything. And this is a well loaded machine between our public works, between our community development, between our police, our fire, our staff. Everybody's engaged, no matter what you put on, we try to make it a success. And I, and every time it is, and people keep, I was at Chase's, this was a few weeks ago. I was talking to a person from Glendora and I think it was a person from San Dimas and a person from Claremont almost saying, no, it's like, we are a destination point. And it's taken years to do that, but by the success of you guys in offering those great businesses and great restaurants and, and the shops and the clothing shops and the jewelry shops, people come here to do just that, spend their money, which is, which is awesome. But the great job by you, Craig. Thank you, you've been doing it for many years, but you're doing it extremely well.
Thank you. And obviously, I would recommend approval of continuation of the district.
Thank you, thank you. Director Shear.
Just real briefly on the budget. As Craig mentioned, there are two capital improvement programs that are listed in next year's, this coming year's budget. And that totals $40,000. Half of it for the Monero Square upgrade, which is on the cusp of being able to occur. And also the additional extension of the tree lights throughout Old Town. It's been a priority for the businesses to add upon what we've built down there already. And so the, the Monero Square, like I mentioned, is moving forward. So with those two one time projects, the budget for next year is showing a deficit of about $25,000, including the revenues from the events that are planned and these expenditures. But they, these have been planned for a long time. They are in the capital improvement program for this next coming year. And so luckily, the, the revenues from this current year, and specifically the wine walk on Saturday night, they'll have paid for almost the majority of that shortfall for next year. So they won't be dipping too far into their reserves, which are healthy at this point. So the Old Town Business Improvement District, after their many second meeting, recommended that the council approve the prepared budget as part of the packet. So with that, staff's recommending that you approve the annual report, you approve the draft budget for next year. You also reestablish the district boundaries and the assessment formula after holding a public hearing on the side. And with that, staff's happy to answer your questions.
I think we'll have a public hearing and then afterwards. Let's open up the public hearing. Do we have any comments or on this issue before you? Anybody? Are you sure? Okay, going once, twice, gone. We'll close the public hearing, we'll bring it back up a day or two. Any comments or questions for Director Shear? Then I would entertain a motion.
Well, I guess before we make a motion, I, I want to second everything everybody said and I get the fact that it feels a little odd not having time allocated for public comments. It came back up and quit. So, so we have to get used to that occasionally that those things happen. But I agree, I, I think that, you know, I'm in full support of the district being redefined and supporting their budget and everything because, because, you know, I was a kid during the time, late 70s, early 80s when Old Town had lost its, its joie de vivre, or its joy of life and became sort of a deserted area. I mean, I used to go to Western Auto all the time as a kid because they had every part I needed. But, but I'm glad to see it thriving and whatever we can do to make sure that that relationship stays strong and Old Town remains robust is awesome.
We just need to expand the footprint a little bit.
Get towards the metro station.
And other ways too, first places. Hopefully we'll do that, keep expanding. Was, any other comments?
All right, I'll make the motion that we, let's see. Where am I? We received and filed reports from the dividend for prior year's activities. We approved the proposed dividend budget and we approved reestablishment of the district boundaries and assessment formula adopting Resolution Number 2223 approving the dividend annual report. Those other letters in there were silent, just for the folks to know.
Vote please. Russian cares. Thank you very much, Mr. Walters. We are going to move to, we're going to move number 8, item 8. Urgency ordinance number 1111, ordinance 1112, mandatory chapter 13.5 Laverne Municipal Code relative to water conservation user restrictions. Director Igo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight I'll be giving you an overview again of our water conservation, current state, and also asking for decisions to be made on our urgency ordinance. So as discussed at the April 18th City Council meeting, California is looming into its third dry year with privacy restrictions being imposed at various degrees. It was the same meeting that council enacted Phase 5 of our own water conservation restriction restriction limits and imposed California drought county surcharges to be effective July 1, 2022 and further requires customers to reduce water usage by 20% based on 2020 data. Based on our reliance on state water project water and the reduction from Department of Water Resources, it was additionally discussed that a one day per week watering restriction was likely to be imposed by three values of each water district and MWD, Metropolitan Water District. With this, with this decision now solidified and a volumetric reduction of 55 gallons per person per day not currently being adopted, the city must now update its urgency ordinance to manage this new mandate. It was further discussed that a $2,000 per acre foot penalty will be imposed on agencies not in compliance with this method methodology. And based off of the penalties that we will receive, we will use those funds to pay for these $2,000 per acre foot penalties that could be imposed on us. Any additional funds that could be received would be used to develop programs for flood replacement, outreach material and giveaways such as positive shut up novels. This would be brought forward to City Council depending on the amount of money that would be needed from these programs, as was done in the past. As a reminder, hand watering of trees and properly operated irrigation systems are exempt along with the high fire hazard severity zone. The city does also have an additional appeals process, as was adopted last time and used last time, for citizens to come forward and basically allow for exemption for various waters. So this process is still in place. The very high fire hazards, very some, I said it 10 times fast, will be the only exception that will not be allowed for exemption because an exemption will already be allowed through this process tonight. What they, with that, the very high fire hazard zone is generally bound from baseline going north and the easterly and the westerly boundaries of the city. So basically, if you're west of, or sorry, north of baseline. First, Section 15.37.20 of Chapter 15.37 of Laverne Municipal Code. The territory described as the very high fire hazard severity zone was established and a map is provided with the agenda packet. Generally speaking, areas north of baseline outside of the city boundaries, such as the camping areas, that let receive water from the city will be identified in the CAL FIRE map, which is also attached to this packet. Based on the decision tonight, the city will utilize several avenues to reach residents and business owners of these new restrictions. This will be done through various notices processes such as the US Postal Service, social media, flyers and the website. With a recent update to the website and a continuous change in conservation, we took the opportunity to enhance our conservation page. A big shout out to our staff, Christie Sanchez and Tracy Cello, who spent a significant amount of time and continue to spend time updating this webpage. So we will continue to see updates of part of this process. One thing of significant significance to note is the option to sign for notifications. This is something that's new that allows people to basically click on a link to put in their, either their email and their phone number to get notifications as we update our conservation page. Additionally, there are several links on our conservation page such as rebates. I have some flyers here from the CAL FIRE webpage, so this will be up there as well. This basically describes how we need to maintain our trees during drought conditions. So that will be up there as well. We'll also have the watering days, so we'll have basically a small snippet of what a week would look like and what those watering days can look like at QuikClans for residents. And based on the decision tonight, the conservation page will be updated by 9 o'clock tomorrow to reflect whichever ordinance is decided upon tonight. As we continue to meet with Three Valleys Municipal Water District and Metropolitan Water District, updates, updates this page and various outreach methods will be used to continue to make sure we reach the residents. Based on the information we have available today, we're asking council to adopt one of the ordinance before you. Option 1 or ordinance 1111 modifies our existing ordinance to reflect the one day period watering with even addresses on Tuesday and odd addresses on Thursday, eight minutes per station, and provides an exemption for the fire hazard zone to reduce by 20%. Option 2, ordinance 1112, still modifies the existing ordinance to reflect the one day period watering, but with the exemption for the fire hazard zones to only be allowed to water three days, Monday, Wednesday and Friday, five minutes per station. There are a few things to consider when deciding on the appropriate approach. Based on conversations with our fire chief and fire marshal, when it comes to setting restrictions in a very high, very high fire hazard area, it can be challenging when it comes to setting specific dates and times. This is due to a myriad of things, which may include types of plant material, varying water demands on those types of material and the simple nature of our climate as we saw with the high temperatures this weekend. However, when speaking with Three Valleys Municipal Water District and Metropolitan Water District, they prefer setting specific dates and times that is easier to track and to enforce. So at the end of the day, I will tell you that MWD Board has already authorized our general manager to enact the 55 gallons per person per day mandate anytime in September based off of information and numbers that they received from us. So that still can be imposed on us. If that is imposed, we would not see that until probably Decemberish of this year. So a lot of decisions we made on your part, but again, this is the information that we have today and it changed just from a month ago when I first presented this information. So with that, I will take any other questions.
And it will change again. So in your estimation, along with our fire chief, the fact that less restrictions on the days of watering, especially for the high fire zone areas, still would be the, would be the method of choice, is that correct?
Which one, the?
1111.
The first one. Ultimately, is your.
I've been there at least twice and it's been almost catastrophic. So we want the least restrictive in order to be able to protect the properties. But I think that would be 111, where the other one would be more restrictive with more days and so.
That's correct. 1111 is less restrictive and 1112 is more restrictive.
Okay. And the only thing I will add to that is that last point that Director Igo made, and that is it'll, what it will ultimately come down to is how much we collectively reduce the use. Because the overarching issue that exists is they could impose 55 gallons per person per day, which, to give perspective, right now we average is 157?
Yeah, so it's a 48% reduction.
Significant reduction. So it's going to be a matter of staying away from that is how well we regulate ourselves going forward.
And that's a very important point because we all know we're in drought. We have to reduce and we have to water sparingly, but yes, we all have to do our part. It's just, I call them almost draconian, but it's where we're at. It's where we're at right now. Our whole state, unfortunately, we don't have desalination plants. We don't have pump water from Missouri or Tennessee. We have what we have. So unfortunately, we're in the drought state. But do we have questions for staff? Mr. Crosby?
I do. No matter which ordinance we take and/or limiting days or times, there still has to be a reduction of 20%. So even if they're watering three days a week at certain times, there has to be a reduction of 20%. Even if there was no restriction on the days, in the fire zone only, it's still based both lower Laverne and upper Laverne has to have the same reduction of 20%.
In general, yes. So north of baseline, they would have to still reduce by 20% either option that's decided upon tonight. So even if they're doing three days per week, there still has to be a 20% reduction. It's a little bit different for the rural areas, still one day per week. Generally speaking, they will probably see a larger reduction because most of your upper usage irrigation is the usage you use in your home. So 60% of your usage, if you have from your home, is tied to your upper irrigation. If you don't have that, then yeah, it's probably a little bit more challenging for you. But if you have any type of wind upset outside, reaching 20% will probably be very easy. Your lawn will look great, but you will still have a pretty good reduction.
But just to make sure that we still have to reduce no matter the days of the week.
Yes.
I guess just to belabor the point and to try to make it as clear as possible, this is a time where we're calling everybody in Laverne to come together and help the city reduce by 20%. Some people may be able to and hopefully will cut more than 20%. So those people who ask for exemptions for either drip line or for high fire or to water trees may not be able to achieve all their 20%, but hopefully they're cutting also so that as a city, we can achieve that 20% and then nothing beyond that should happen. Unless and until the state realizes that the drought is worse than it is currently, then we need to make additional steps.
Yes, so we all should be doing our part. I agree that, I will tell you, the challenge is that the statement for, you know, us to reduce, we can reduce, but if we'll say other areas that are vegetated water project don't reduce, we could still be in a bind.
Right.
Hopefully our goal is if everyone is doing their part across the state, keep our fingers crossed and then along the.
So your point is well made, which is while Laverne needs to band together and make sure we take care of ourselves to achieve that 20% savings, we also need to band with everybody else in the state of California unless and until we get to the point where we start collecting water that falls as rain rather than only waiting for it to be snow. So you have your ideas of water conservation, I have mine because there's a whole lot of water that falls on California that we just let it rush out to the ocean through these cement channels that we should figure out different ways because water's important. It's cheap, but it's very important and we need to find innovative ways to capture that stuff.
Yeah, and I will applaud the citizens of Laverne. In 2017, they banded together and they did significant reductions. So we're asking them to do that again this time. Again, it's going to be a challenging time, but we can all, hopefully we can all band together if we can do this.
I'll go back to my earlier comment, share a shower. I'm sorry, we haven't done a public comment yet. I assume you can wait.
It was, it's not a question, but I just wanted to comment on the two resolutions, just to spell check. There's a Herbie nearby on multiple places. But I did want to also just, as I was looking and you were talking about the website, I did want to shout out if people have not taken a look at it, it's much more easily navigable than the prior one. And there are quite a few different programs on there. I know it's not, we all want to hear, but water is limited, so taking advantage of what opportunities are available. And I appreciate everything that's been very clearly laid out with links to everything. So, thank you.
I do. Surprise, surprise. Okay. You know, the hard part was, I just got back from Gettysburg in Washington DC. The greenery there, my daughter and I were talking about how beautiful and open their land is and I told her, take in all the green out because we're not going to see it here. But a couple of questions for you is, first, what I think about is the average resident, you know, I don't feel that's the biggest waste of water. I really feel that the business parks around them have all this greenery and I even know my church down on baseline, we have so much greenery. Is that going to be monitored and talked to them too? Because you see at nighttime driving by and there's water running in the street. What are we going to do to help that?
Yeah, so part of that will be through administrative process and they have to find them. So they are still on the same restrictions, the one day per week. Our hope is that they will be in compliance, but if they're not, then we will start an administrative application process. Hopefully we can just notify them and they'll be in compliance, but if not, then we can go through an administrative application process. I will tell you, the state water restriction control board has been tasked by the governor to be evaluating the sexual church, which is in essence those parks. So that could change here even the next month or two to potentially then make that. So as of right now, they're still up the same standards of one day per week.
Okay. And could you please go into, say, city parks? I know at our youth and family, youth and sports organization, we were talking a little bit about what happens for the baseball fields, the parks. Could you talk about how that is going to be maintained?
Yeah, so we can be able to do our part to reduce our water usage. For a lot of our parks, we do have trees in there and so since trees are generally exempt, we don't have a method to water them without our irrigation system, but we will still be reducing significantly our parks. They will not be as green as you are used to, so we hope that you all understand that we're doing what we can, but we do still need to maintain our parks as a whole.
Okay. And then going back, you talked about the drip feed system. So those of all of the communities that did the drip feed in 2016 around that time period, now they can do an exemption form if possible?
They don't need to. They're already exempt. Handwater your trees and those drip irrigations are already exempt. Now, if, we'll just say that you still have to reduce 20% because you've done these things already and you can't make that 20% reduction, then yes, you would have to go through that process saying, I have already reduced my water usage and I get an exemption. But generally speaking, if you can reduce it 20%, you do need to do nothing with this.
Okay. Okay, and then the hillside erosion, that is a big area and I'm thrilled, excuse me, I'm thrilled to hear what you said about the area up north because we do have to worry about that. There's homes built throughout that hillside and so we need to preserve that and for the safety too, because it's very hard to even get insurance up there. Let me see. Okay, now 55 gallons, if we get to September, then mandate 55 gallons per person, per household is, doesn't it take five gallons of water to flush a toilet?
It shouldn't.
Not that much.
You have that toilet.
How much is it? I heard that one, I thought about 55 gallons.
1.5.
Two gallons.
1.5 or 10?
Maybe.
Less than 10.
Should be 1.5.
Yeah, even less or even less now. Yes, more or even less.
What is your fault?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's still a significant reduction, so based off of, you know, last year's heat season, it's a 48% reduction across the board for the city.
48%.
So, yeah, generally speaking, I, again, if you're an average user, you would need to reduce your water by almost a percent to be in compliance with this, by going per person per day. And generally, that's going to be just completely eliminating outdoor irrigation. So if you can live with it and live like that, then it will be in compliance, but it's a lot of damage.
Okay, thank you for your answer.
Yes.
I just have a follow up. Based on what Robin was mentioning about the business parks and everything else, I noticed that in the rebate section, there's a commercial rebate information. Is that information going to be part of the campaign when you go out?
Yes.
Okay, so you.
We push you all that and obviously generally speaking, I know not everyone has access to computers, but that's the way a lot of people work. They maybe need for to see that. You can't call them and work through that, but we're going to be pushing everyone to our website to those links so that they can hopefully access that information.
Okay, great. And then if that isn't, then perhaps there's some way we can do a workshop or a place where people can use a computer, maybe come in and do that.
The library.
Yeah, the library, they have a perfect spot to use that.
But walk them through it because I know that seems like extra work, but it's what it's going to take to help.
Yeah, someone wants to come in, we can try to work through that process with them and hopefully we can get that through there pretty quickly. But it's definitely straightforward process, or they can call Metropolitan Water District and they can help guide them through that process because it's really a program and they're going to be easily guided through that by Metropolitan staff.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It's just about reeducating all of us again to what we used to do a number of years ago, which a lot of us took our turf out with hard services and in the Lake County wanted to charge us for the hard services. It was wonderful. It's great. But anyway, you guys have done a great job. I think it's very important. Our new website's up. I think that we need to get any creative ideas. It's wonderful, you know, because we have gray water, certain, like we were talking about gray water and things that you could reuse and put on roses or whatever to, you don't allow that to go down the drain. So we appreciate that. So we need to open up. Any other questions for Director Igo? We need to open up a public, public hearing. We'll open up a public hearing now. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Ms. Anderson.
Ann Anderson, please. I prefer that we go with letting the people decide where they're going to use their water from. You know, instead of saying, okay, you can only, I live in a high fire area, it's only three days a week. Well, let us decide if we wanted to take shorter showers, you know, use water from our faucets, water our plants or whatever, and let us water when we want.
Or shower with a neighbor. David said.
I have to give my puppy a shower.
No, it's okay.
I wasn't directing at anybody. I was just throwing it out.
So that's what I would prefer because, you know, we all just have different landscaping and plants. There are some plants that have to be watered every day or they're going to die. So I would rather give them a cup of water or, you know, water those plants every day and let the other ones go if they don't. I mean, we should be able to do that ourselves. If, as long as we're, you know, lowering our water costs, our water gallons by 20%, then we shouldn't have to be told when to water. It's ridiculous. We didn't before. We didn't have that before. And I guess we can all do it and do it before, so let's, let's, let's everybody who has a home and knows their home and knows their plants just figure it out themselves.
We just have to have more deodorant, just like the French.
What?
More deodorant like the French.
Okay. You know, you can put a bucket in the shower with you and water your plants out with you. That's what I had to do last time. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Cavendish. It's all that campaign walking.
I should behave better, I guess. On a serious note, the water restriction is obviously a big deal for everybody, but I think we need to be looking at where we're at with other things that we do that might cost water. So a question I would have is, what is the impact of a fire have on our water usage? And when I bring that up, I talk about, you know, the golf course, Sierra Laverne, and the fact that that still has not been addressed, even though it's been brought up many times, and why maybe a bulldozer around the perimeter is to kind of mitigate some of the fire risk of all those residents that are in a high fire risk too, even though they're not on the east or western those borders. Maybe we should consider that. Additionally, I don't think that we should be levying any fines against anybody in mobile home parks, period, end of story. I brought that up last time. I think there's, there can't be this blanket approach to this. These people have limited incomes, they have limited lifestyles. All they want to do is kind of get to their days and burden them with any of this, I think is kind of selfish. Additionally, I look at all the commercial landscapes around here that are all green. I would suggest that maybe part of our planning and our code for that down the road is more of what they see in Arizona. If we're going to continue to deal with this drought and our state's not going to help us, then we have to help ourselves. Then let's start building into how our city is developing. I look around the target property, I look around some of these properties and they have high gloss with a lot of green and the sprinklers are keeping looking great. You could find alternative ways to make them look beautiful that we should be considering. So we look down the road as opposed to just worrying about this year, let's worry about the next 10 years because I don't think this is going to go away. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the desk. There was a, commercial properties, like our grocery stores that use a lot of water, especially in the primaries and things like that, where are they with their restriction? Obviously, we're all going to restrict those customers, but we have some, you know, multiple grocery stores that use an tremendous amount of water every day.
Yeah, so as long as they're using it internally, I mean, again, this is a blanket approach to reduction. However, we still have a process to allow them to come for an exemption. So if they say, we've already implemented water saving measures and devices, here's what we've done, then we can go through some processes and we can either allow for that or, you know, say no, we need to do more.
But even with that, the exemption of the one day a week would not apply.
Correct.
To. To the commercial properties that are on foothill because they're not outside of the exclusion zone.
Correct. It applies, yeah, they are still required to do one day per week now, so regardless of what they're doing, if they're in the commercial area, their irrigation has to be reduced one day per week. But anything internal, if they've done more, they can apply for an exemption. No different than the mobile home parks. If, again, I completely agree that where can they reduce, right? If there's opportunity, hopefully they can find it. If not, they can still go through our exemption process.
The nice thing about the mobile home communities are the fact they have smaller postage stamp lawns and things, which is good. And I would imagine more hand watering for pots and things like that, but still, it is a concern.
But even in those cases, where they have tree strip, lawn strips that might be bounding their properties, those will be restricted to one day.
And then watering the trees, the trees and everything else. Okay. Thank you. Council, any comments or?
Bob, did you have, want to answer any of the comments?
Regarding, though, I think the golf course is the one.
Yeah, the only thing I would add regarding that is we have met with the representative and we are going through the fuel modification and abatement process with the county. And I think the meeting is set for the next couple of weeks. They are within their timeframe of alleviating the transfer fuels as well as the weeds that have exceeded a certain level and are within a certain distance of properties. They will also be looking at some of the trees along with our fire marshal that they feel need to be taken out. This is a good productive meeting that we had with them roughly a week ago now.
Thank you. Council.
Yeah, I would like to see our city look at, I know it's expensive, the initial, but I think with water problems, it's going to be continued with water. Because I would love to see our city do something like Rancho's done. They use river rock and they go up like a hillside and come around or even in the parkways, it's on the ground, comes around, still has a plant for drip feed, but it's mostly river rock and it's just beautiful to look at, but they use no water on it. And it's quite a bit, if you go up Milliken or Day Creek, it's beautiful. So I would love to see us, you know, put some money towards something like that and start considering smaller areas to do and build it up over the years.
Thank you. Council, we're off.
Comments, I think we just need to figure out.
Well, I do. Mr. Crosby, no comments?
No, I'm just, my only comment would be go to option number one, but still remind everybody that the reduction still needs to be 20%. That, I think that's the key piece. No matter how many days we pick, it just still has to be a reduction. And this is not something that everybody enjoys or will enjoy. It's just the state where we are at, so, you know, we had early rain and then the highest point ever, no rain during our rainy season. And that's, that's the hardest part.
You know, I have a question going back to this. What Anna said does make sense to me. 20, and why can't we look at just doing, you know, mandate 20% reduction at every household and not give them a day they have to water? It worked last time we did it, didn't it?
This is being mandated on us. We don't want. This is being mandated on us, we don't have a choice.
That these are the only two options, you cannot look at a third option?
The only, the only reason we have an option is because we have a designated area that has a high fire zone, otherwise the entire city would be subjected to one day a week. So because of that, we basically got an area of the city that's got an exclusion, and the rest of the city that does not.
Okay.
Presenting our speaker.
Hi, thanks so much for taking my question. I was wondering, I heard Rob's comments about spending some money on river rock, I also have been interested in alternative ground coverings. I feel like the most water waste is trying to keep this grass alive during the summer, but even myself trying to research what alternative ground cover would be best for our zone, for it still to be comfortable for kids to play on. It seems like there's so many nuances, and so is there any state or conservation organizations, or possibly the opportunity for us to do it ourselves, to provide helpful information, and possibly disseminate themselves to residents who would be interested in bathing out grass into native California grass covers?
So real quick, we answered that in general, Metropolitan water district, they're gonna be the best ones to run through the state, especially if you want to plan a rebate. So they can tell you what's allowable, what's not allowable, and at the end of the day, it's really, you, if she has children, she wants to use that as playable space, obviously putting river rock everywhere probably not the best option for children, but even turf sometimes, if you're putting in fake turf sometimes, that's not always the best option for your children, they could be allergic to certain types of products that are out there. So unfortunately, you gotta do your research, talk to Metropolitan, see what they can apply for, but I agree, we've looked at other alternatives in the city, we did some of that, the newer park, the small corner, we did, we got rid of everything but mulch in, so we do look at those options, and I would say in general, anytime you put in a new rebate, it's drop taller, what we're doing on foothill, what we're doing on arrow highway, anything that we put in in the future, we do look at it as drop taller, as opposed to turf, turf is really not the option for some of those areas.
Is it possible to put that link on our webpage?
It's already up there.
It's already up there?
It is, and we will also push that.
Tracy, why should I even question that?
We will also push that information out.
Totally, I am so sorry for even assuming it wasn't on that page. So basically, we'll direct our residents to look on the website, there's, they give interviews, I must, and say it loudly, that if you're gonna do a rebate, you better get on there now, because the problem is, remember last time, Tracy, that funds ran out extremely quickly, and they are very strict on your rebates and how you do it. Don't do it and then file for a rebate, you have to file it all the way across the way. If you're gonna do something, you have to submit, and there's, there's rules that you have to follow, or else you won't be doing it. So, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, we're gonna close public comment again, we'll go back up to the dais. Counsel. Mr. Davis? Then I think we need to figure out which one we're gonna do, I, I do prefer the freedom of the residents for a 20% reduction, I think it's a little draconian when we start pushing, and I also wanna, along with the fire department, thinks this is a better idea for us, to make sure that we, as we know in our north area, it's pretty bad, and it's gonna get even worse, and so we wanna be safe, make sure residents are safe, but make sure that we all are on a 20% reduction. So with that.
So, can I just ask a clarifying question to Chief? So if it is three days a week, is that better for fire prevention than the one day a week in your, in your?
One day a week is lower, is below baseline.
Above baseline is either three days a week, or just a reduction of 20%.
Okay.
So there's not a three-day option for other people.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh-oh. I mean, just to touch, kind of, I mean, you clarifying us, I, I do believe that going to 20% is a little bit less aggressively to will than just going to a number of, couple of days, obviously it's the goal that we're trying to achieve, but like we mentioned through this process, when Sean and I were kind of working through this, you know, the intent is to obviously save water, but you know, you either have live vegetation or dead vegetation, and you know, the intent is to try and keep it alive as much as possible. The reality is that any reduction in watering much of this landscape is gonna result in some sort of drying out of that vegetation, so in my professional opinion, the most amount of water that we can keep on that portion of our city is better, certainly.
Thank you, Chief Mick.
So that would be option one?
Yes.
One, one, one.
One, one.
So. Yeah, I think, I, I join you, Mayor, in suggesting that our residents can step, step up to the cause and, and use water prudently seven days a week, rather than requesting that they only use it three days a week, so I'd be in support of making a motion to pass ordinance one, 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 one.
Well, I'm sorry, can we second on that one?
I'll second it, but just clarification, it's only our residents in the higher fire zone.
Yes.
Above baseline.
Right, yes.
Just wanna make sure.
Just, just in the very high fire hazard sensitivities.
Will this be up on our website? We can, okay, so we are going to put the map up on our website as to the area that's excluded from.
And our residents, you are not cut and paste, you can, you have to. We have a second, shall we vote?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Yes. Motion carries, we approve ordinance number one, 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 one unanimously.
An urgency of ordinance of the city council, amending sections 1315.04O and 1315.043 of chapter 1315 of the Water Conservation Use and Usage Code.
Now, we are gonna bounce backwards on item seven, on item B, which is the 2022-23 comprehensive fee schedule. Thank you, staff, very much.
Thank you.
Tracy, box that water.
She didn't have to have her reset.
No. And who's gonna report on this one?
I will say this one, Mr. Mayor. As is customary every year, as part of the budget process, staff looks at the fees that we charge for the various services we provide to ensure that we are collecting the appropriate amount based on the cost of providing those services. We're bringing this forward as the annual hearing for your consideration, and by way of reminder, this was a continuation of the last meeting, because we weren't ready to post it for the last meeting, we weren't ready to, to submit it to you at that time. Essentially, there are very few changes, there is one on special event permit process, where we identified a need to have a fee for permits that were denied, but the individuals chose to hold the event anyways, we realized that there was no way for us to capture the cost that we would have had to incur to shut down the event that was otherwise denied, so we added a section for that. But then in addition to that, the other changes are primarily in the fire department, and I'll credit the fire chief for, as part of his fresh look at the department and assessing where some of the, the costs have not necessarily been captured or to the full extent, he is bringing forward some recommendations of changes on where we can improve in that area. One of the specific areas was to add a non-resident charge in our medical and transport fee, this will be above what it would be for the cost of providing medical or transport to an individual that's a non-resident, and will fill some of that gap that we're otherwise not collecting for those other fees. Some of the other fees that are listed under plan review are specific fees, rather than we had been charging a deposit and then charging with the actual cost, based on a new contract that we've executed, these will be the flat fees for those, so the, the resident will know coming in exactly what they're gonna pay for whatever those particular inspections are. The only other area of highlight is, as it relates to our annual business inspections, in evaluating what we were collecting, it did not rise to the level of what it is that the actual costs are, whether it's an engine company that is going out there, or the fire marshal is going to have to do it, and it's kind of cleaned up that process and identified anything below 11,000 square feet would be done by an engine company, anything over that, or has some special circumstances, will be turned over to the fire marshal to do the level of inspection. And those are the highlights of the changes, and I would like to at least point out, there will be one more that will be coming, we'll be amending this in the coming month, and that's because, as part of the chief's evaluation, there are some other fees that aren't listed at this point, and we have an agreement that still hasn't been approved by council, so we'll be bringing that to your annual agreement next year, and we'll be amending the fee schedule with some updates, basically as it relates to being able to charge for traffic collisions and things of that nature, that, where we have a response and a call associated to, so there's a list of fees that we will be hiring an agency to assist with collection of those. So we'll bring that back as a supplemental of this, and I just wanted you to be aware that this is primarily everything else, and that we would be requesting a fee adjustment.
I personally, I appreciate this, because for many years, the fee adjustments were, didn't really spell them out, and I think this was extremely well done, and not only that, I appreciate the input from the chief, and also from all the departments, and Director Pendleton, because we don't wanna feed people to death, but we have to charge for our fees in order for our city to grow, and as we're growing, those fees are very important, and we must capture every fee that we have for developers, and not only for the fees, for, I know that the businesses get upset sometimes, but I think we're in a different time now, where we need to protect our businesses, just as we do for our residents, and we've had some fires in our residences lately, which is very disturbing, and it displaces people, it can cause death, it can also cause death to our employees, and so I think moving forward with this, it's really good that we have a fee structure that's gonna capture this, but ultimately, it's for the safety of our residents, I do appreciate that a lot, and I think focusing on that. And also updating these fees to current, because years go by, and all of a sudden, it's just like me running my business, if I kept my fees the same 10 years ago, it doesn't work well. You have to update the fees with the current structure, and the current cost, so I appreciate it, I just wanted to comment on that, because it was done well, extremely well, you can read it, you read line what the parts were changed, and I really appreciate that, there was no gas, you know, so, but, any comments or questions before we go to public comment?
I'll just end with your remarks.
Thank you. We'll go to public comment? They're all looking to me like.
Yeah. You can leave anytime you like.
They look like they had too much wine at the wine walk, that's all of them.
Sounds great, man, even though I had to register.
Any, any questions or comments, or nothing on the, or do we have any emails?
One more time.
You two over there?
No.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and close public comment, and we're gonna bring up the dais comments from the council.
And I just reiterate what you were saying, too, when I called and was asking about the reasons why the fees moving up, and the explanation with Bob and Chief Mick saying is, especially for the businesses, because those rates grew so dramatically, really wanted the explanation for it, but it's the personnel that's going on there, and we need to make sure the cost of that, that personnel is, is being covered for that service. So appreciate the explanation, to understand why it's grown so significantly.
Wow, just doing it. Okay, and I motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the 2022-2023 comprehensive fee schedule.
I'll second it.
Second, all those vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, staff, great job, thank you very much. We move to public comments and oral communications, we have some comments from the audience, and we, I don't have any more. Mr. Cavendish?
Yep, me again.
Unless he was leaving.
Or is that way? First of all, I'd like to reiterate what I heard earlier about the wine walk, and thank the residents who tolerated all the folks parking in their yards, it, it was, it was a big contribution to why it was successful, because it avoids places to park, and for people to walk to their cars, as opposed to, you know, staying away because they couldn't find places to park. On some of the things that I've noticed, the wildland fire plan, since we're talking about fire safety, 50% water reductions, things like that, in my opinion, the best way to avoid expenses is the plan to avoid expenses, and I'm wondering why that plan is still dated 2014. Weather hasn't gotten better for us in the last number of years, so I'm hoping that we address that, I'm sure Chief Mick and his staff will, but I side out mine, but I know I've brought that up before. And then, kind of in my journey these days, one thing that I've noticed that I feel needs more attention, and it's not to be kind of picky about things, but I think it is important to safety, since everybody likes to talk about safety in our city, is the traffic safety relative to speed. So Esperanza and Wheeler are racetracks. Basically, Wheeler people from the foothill stoplight going north are in takeoff mode, and especially with electric vehicles now, some you can hear when they're driving up the hill with their big engine cars, and the electric vehicles you cannot, and those cars are getting up the hill way too fast, and I think we need to do something about bringing awareness, not being penalty-driven, but awareness-driven, and I think Esperanza, since I personally experienced it, I do not live there, that cars coming down that hill are literally out of control, because they're gathering so much speed now, because we've raised the speed limit in that area, and now what I came to learn is, there's two new families there with kids, and all we need, I don't think anybody ever wants to hear, the young family had a child who was not familiar with the neighborhood, the family was not familiar with the traffic patterns that are in, that their kid kicked a ball down the street, went in the street, and then are we gonna be worried about 35 mile an hour speed limit, 30 mile an hour speed limit? What are we gonna be worried about then? So I suggest that we actually look into what's going on on that Esperanza downgrade in particular, and do something for those people there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavendish. You were staring at me really closely on that, because I come down that road, was it me?
Might have been the other guy.
It was the other guy.
With a blue truck.
I don't like your car, so there you go. Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Bowden.
Mr. Edburn. Counsel, I'm just wondering if we can get an update, I remember, I think towards the end of last year, there was quite a big issue regarding the teen center, and ass, and taking over part of the Los Flores Park potentially, but if I remember right, certain council members indicated that we're gonna try to get a grant, and that we'd already spent $80,000 on architectural fees, I believe, and, but we were gonna apply for a grant, and if we did not get that grant money, that the whole issue of the teen center was, was a moot point. I heard recently that we were denied that grant, and I'm wondering if, if anybody, perhaps the city manager can confirm that, so in fact, the teen center is in fact a dead issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bowden. Anyone else? Mr. Allison.
Thank you to all the vendors, and everybody who helped make the wine walk a success, I got out with my wife, and was able to enjoy the downtown area, it's just one of the main examples, I think, of how we come together and have really good events for our family, so thank you to all the vendors, thank you to all the store owners in downtown who made this possible, we really enjoyed ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Anyone else? Close. Nothing.
Thank you.
That would be enough, sir. I'm holding up my calendar of events on here to make sure we don't miss any, because our city staff does a really great job trying to keep us, I ask for a calendar, because I never know what the heck's going on, you can put it in your own calendar. We will close public comment.
I will, if the counsel would like, I'll ask a question on the grant application. I'll answer a question on the, uh, grant, uh, application, and yes, that grant application was denied. However, I, the project still exists, it's just not funded to a full extent at this point. So, it's, lives on our CIP, as council is aware of. Um, until further action, I think it just remains there, um, and we'll continue to pursue grant opportunities to that, uh, for that effort.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Who would like to start? Counselor Carter?
I will. Uh, week ago Friday was the Laverne Day at the county fair, and it was really nice. And, and they're happy to be open once again, so I hope everybody gets out to the county fair. They're open through May 25th, is that the date? Does anyone remember? But do check, there's limited days that they're open, it's not all week long, so please go on the website. Beautiful website, explains everything they've got going on, concert series, you buy tickets, and we wanna support the county fair. They've had a hard time over the last couple of years, and they're so thrilled to be open. And the new director is just really a great guy, and he works with our city quite a bit. Um, the other part is, I've been gone for the last 10 days. As I said, I went to Gettysburg and Washington DC. And when I went to the monument for Lincoln, one of the sayings I saw, I just loved, and it was, "A house divided will not stand." And it just really made me think about our city. We have such a great city. Obviously, we all chose to live here in Laverne and buy our homes. And, um, I've been very happy with how the council meetings have been going lately. It's been business first, taking care of it, community involvement, and I thank everyone for that. That's very important. Um, it's just, I wanna keep that going. We need to focus that. We are all like a family here in Laverne. We need to do and give guidance to council, and, uh, as I said, when I do step down, I plan on attending meetings and keeping you accountable. But, um, you know, that's what we're for. We're to work together as a team, and we love to hear from people what should be done. We have a great fire chief, we have a new police, uh, police chief, and department heads that are just outstanding. Our city has never been so cohesive, working together. I'm just, I'm just thrilled where we are right now, and I'm proud to say that this is our city. Um, the last thing I'd like to say is, I have a request. A resident called me and asked, and I thought, yeah, it's about time. It's been a while, a good couple of years, that our dispatch moved from just Laverne dispatch to where we use county services too. So, they wanted to know if we could have an update. They watched the meeting all the time, they can't come, and so, they wanted to see if we could have an update on how it's going, just really, you know, what, what our services are. They wanted to understand, they, you know, just didn't get involved before. But she said, she wanted to understand, how does it work? You call 911, what happens? So, if we could just have a report, either fire, police, or, um, staff giving a report, explaining that, and then just saying whether it's going well, it's not what, where we are with that.
Probably more appropriate to the fire chief, but I will work with chief on coordinating getting something for council.
Thank you.
Mr. Crosby?
Thank you. Short, uh, tonight, I just really appreciate, um, the, the POW and MIA chair. Um, I, I just applaud the craftsmanship that, uh, made and still continuing to be done to that chair, and, um, really appreciate, uh, that, um, coming to our city and honoring our veterans, um, and, um, our military, and especially the people that are missing. Um, and that, that presentation, uh, today was, was very moving, so, that's my only comments tonight.
Counselor Lott?
I just wanna reiterate, um, the fair is back in full effect, and I know, just because I live right by it, so I get to hear it in concerts, um, all the time, which is actually nice, it doesn't bother me.
Freaks at your house, man.
But it is, uh, it was a really fun event, so if you get a chance to go back out, that would be great. Um, the other, uh, thing I did wanna mention was, you know, we've been hearing all these things with the proclamations, all the different things that we're celebrating this month. Um, I don't know if you're on social media at all, but our police department did note that it was National Police Office Thursday Memorial Day. Sorry, that took me a week out. And it's also kicked off, uh, National Police Week, uh, this week. And so, I think the takeaway that we can all think about when we're having all these proclamations and these celebrations that we, um, big acknowledging, is that, you know, we're all different, but there was really something special about each and every group, uh, and that we should take the time to appreciate each other, because I do think that sometimes it's too easy to think about the negative things or to think about how we can criticize someone. And really, I think everyone is trying to do their best, um, and they'll bring something to the table. Um, and I know that, you know, again, I would say, we don't always see eye to eye, but I always appreciate the folks who come, who engage in different ways, whether they can be here in person or not. Um, so just think about that as we go through. May is a very famous. Um, I would also say, we're heading into the end of the year, and we've got students who are going to prom, um, next week, we've got commencement and graduations, and so it's a very fun celebratory time of the year. So, you know, think about those folks as you are going on your day as well. And the last thing I believe is a, um, sort of a, just a FYI PSA, is that for those people that could not make it to the candidates forum that occurred on Thursday, the 12th, um, it is on, it is on YouTube, so you can get it, and I believe it's now linked on our city website as well, and the speeches that the various candidates, uh, prepared through LVTV. So, those are all available.
All the press statements, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Um, and I note that just because I know sometimes people can't make it out, whether because they're putting kids to bed, or they're doing things, or work is running late, or you're stuck in traffic. Um, I don't want people not to be engaged or to not know. Um, it is available, please take a look. That is all, have a good rest of your week.
Thank you.
So, before we move on, the date of the fair anyways, May 30th, so...
Oh, Thursday, oh, okay.
May 31st. Is it 31st or 30th? Okay.
Yeah. Through Memorial Day weekend, yeah. Okay. And, and I appreciate everybody's remarks, and I'm gonna flavor it similarly, slightly different, because I too had to miss the LA, Laverne Day at LA County Fair to see my son graduate up in, uh, Logan, Utah, from Utah State University. That was a wonderful day, but I'm gonna make sure I go to the fair at least two or three times to make up for missing that. Um, I also missed the wine walk, um, because my daughter was dancing with the D Street dance group at the Benita Center for the Arts. So, um, there, you know, it's, it's one of those things where we're lucky enough and fortunate enough that we have to make challenging decisions, 'cause apparently I might be missing a softball game on June 2nd, which would really be a bummer, 'cause, you know, that'd be a fun game to go to. But the Pomona Valley Transportation Authority that I chair, um, passed its annual budget for next year, so, um, those services will be available, forget about, and other services offered, um, not only by Laverne, but San Yves, Claremont, and Pomona. Um, I agree that the candidate forums, um, and I get to participate in two so far, along with Steve Johnson, we got to, uh, perform in a district one, uh, forum at Hillcrest, and then we had to joint one with everybody last Thursday night. And, um, unfortunately, Hillcrest is not available online, but the all-city one is available on YouTube, and for those who don't wanna use a computer but have access to Spectrum, um, will be broadcast on Channel 3 occasionally. Not sure what the dates and hours for those broadcasts are. Um, but thanks for being here, everybody. It's a lot of fun things to do in Laverne. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro temp Davis. Um, this is also Military Appreciation Month, so I wanna thank Councilmember Carter for the, uh, chairs of honor. That was a very, very noble thing he did to celebrate all of our military heritage, and so important for those 83,000 people that never return. I think it's, it's a wonderful tribute to our community, so thank you very much. That was, that was a really, really nice move on your part to make that happen.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me read the resolution.
You did well, you put the mic.
I had you trained, you were holding it for me.
That's right. No pressure about that. Um, Teacher of the Year banquet award is this Thursday, I think it's at Mountain Meadows. Yeah, that's this Thursday. Um, and so, uh, some of us will be attending, and I think I'll be attending. Um, a girl's softball, Go Bearcat Nation. I tell you, our Benita sports is just incredible. We have just been rocking the boat, and especially the girls have just been taken off. Now, I know that the boys did a second round CIF last week, and they lost on their, on their, uh, second round, but, uh, all the sports have been doing fantastic. It just shows that we have great students, but great parents and great coaches in a great school district, so we're all blessed of being at the Benita Unified School District. Um, and again, thank you for everybody that showed. Um, I know that it wasn't as many people as we would expect for our candidate forum, but I think people are still just afraid of coming out and going outside and coming into a closed area, so, but, you know, we, we move through it slowly and get back to some normalcy. Um, as Mr. Davis, I was not able to attend, I was babysitting with my wife a two-year-old in San Marcos, so, but, um, anything we do in this city for any of the functions we do is just successful. And Director Shear, I know that that's a big one for you guys, that, that you really had that up, and, um, I just want the beer walk now, so, hurry up, 'cause, you know, but anyway, our...
Your two-year-old and that next.
But, I don't know. But I would say that, in your estimation, uh, the people from outside the area, how many?
Oh, I don't know, I don't have the access to the ticket sales, so they're all online, so it's really hard to say. Obviously, some of the membership community did it out of it.
But it's a nice mix.
Yeah.
'Cause every time we've ever had it, it's always been these people from everywhere, from 20, 30 miles out come to visit our little city, which is great. Um, really, that's it. I, uh, thank you all for attending, and I appreciate all of our staff for, especially our, our fee structure and our water director, Igo, although it's painful, but, uh, we have to do it. And our, we have, uh, our next, we have a presentation on June 6th at 4:30 PM, presentation to 2022-23 budget, City Council, say that right. And then, our next regular scheduled meeting is June 6th at 6:30 PM. We will adjourn at 8:22 PM.